The green has nothing.
All right, so sorry to hear about Chief. Who's the lead?
Oh, yesterday, oh. Send our condolences.
So if you ask me to come for one purchase order through the Seacoast Fire Officers Mutual Aid, purchase order number is 0637. It's for our annual breathing apparatus assessment for 2016. $170. And it's out of the SEBA.
This is a standard.
So purchase order number 637, Seacoast Fire Officers Association Mutual Aid for annual breathing apparatus assessment for $170.
Second. Any discussion? All else in favor say aye.
Does the board have anything for Chief that I can add?
Has Caroline, Caroline I know has been trying to arrange between health, fire, not police. Maybe police and, and the building inspector to look at the old sportsman's club. It's now a rooming house apparently? For life safety issues or no, she's done all of that?
I know from public health she has not. I know by, it's just a chief which working.
Okay, so, okay, so we don't help with them, okay.
Anything else?
Anything on health or are you good there?
I thought I had it covered. You're, you're, you're familiar with that.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Welcome back.
Thank you. I'd say it's great to be here, but I don't know if I really want to.
One day at a time, right?
One day at a time.
Okay, two purchase orders that both related to our, our new officer and his evaluations. First one is purchase order number 767 for Seacoast Rated Care for one physical examination for the amount of $72. And that will come out of our preventative health account.
We took the purchase order 767, Seacoast Rated Care for one physical exam for $72. Any discussion? Or would they say aye? Aye, sorry.
All right, purchase order number 786 to head up to cognitive and behavioral therapies out of New Brunswick, Mass. And this is for a psychological examination for $400. And again, that'll come out of the preventive health as well.
Purchase order number 786 to cognitive and behavioral therapies for a psychological examination of our new officer for $400.
Second. So Chief, do they specialize in law enforcement to that kind of a?
Yes. We used to go to a gentleman in Rochester, he's since gone to, moved to Arizona. So he recommended this, this person here and a lot of the departments in the Seacoast and the Massachusetts area. He also does, you know, back-to-work issues, home maintenance.
So we don't have to use that. Any other questions? I'll call it that. All else in favor say aye.
Aye.
How are all the officers doing? Invited a lot.
No.
All right.
Uh, the new cruiser has arrived. I picked it up Tuesday. It's sitting down in front of the drive-through downstairs. It's, it's still there. The, uh, the vendor has our Chevy now and he's dismantling that. Once the Chevy's done, he'll drop that off here, pick up the Ford and then bring it down and put it all back together. So just to make you aware of that.
Are we gonna sell them? What are we gonna do with them?
We'll put it out today. What we're gonna do. The first week of July has been very busy for us to include three overdoses. Uh, those three folks, I did survive.
They did.
They did survive, yeah. Um, I think that we did three times the number of calls for the first week of July this year than we did last year. Which has been one. Really has. And, uh, probably one-third of those calls are related to one particular problem on Third Street. We've got a number of issues with them over a five-day period. So we intend, anticipate they're rectifying that, the women arrest, probably tomorrow. So hopefully that will take your issues.
All right. I'm sorry to hear. As long as the force is doing okay.
And the last time when I met with the tour view, two or two Mondays ago, we talked about the city rainstorm that we had, the Monday and the Sunday prior to that. If we had any water infiltration. And I mentioned that way. We had none. However, waited until Tuesday morning to come in through the floor to the lobby. When I came in Tuesday morning, we probably had about a sixteen-inch by four-and-a-half-foot puddle of water in the lobby downstairs.
So. So I know Norm Drew called, we went out with Norm and he was gonna get Mr. Hammond. Norm called me on Friday to, but Mr. Hammond had been out on vacation. And he wanted to make sure, Mr. Drew wanted to make sure that we knew that they were in the process of following up with you and doing a walkthrough with him. I, I know it was only Monday. I don't know if Mr. Hammond got in touch with you yet.
No, that's.
But this was Friday night that they called you. All right, so it's in the works for us to evaluate the situation and what we can do about it, 'cause it is more than just, than just that one spot that has a lot of issues, so, yeah.
Probably sometime this couple of years, the whole floor will have to be replaced. All the tiles will have to be replaced. Because they're all curling, you know.
And drainage.
And where the, where the water's coming out.
And we have a drainage pipe right outside, we weren't here. We have a drainage pipe coming from our building right here that was supposed, I'm assuming supposed to lead to the hedge basin. It doesn't head that way. So it's heading into the road. So it's still far enough away, but.
It just turns and walks away.
Right. We don't follow it. So there was, and, and the second garage isn't slumped right, and that's why water's coming into their garage. And they have to put sand at the doorway so water doesn't go back into. There's other issues.
The back garage is slumped.
Yeah.
Coming into the building is supposed to make up.
What do we think, yeah, about being a civil engineer? So if, if we address, if we were able to address the drainage problem around the building, does that resolve future issues down there? I know we, we have to fix the issue as current, but does it? Does that?
That's where they come in. Because they also wanted your history, because they know you've been here so long and that you know the history and they, as Mr. Drew was looking at it, he, he's looking at this going, there's no drainage here, so water's just seeping up because it's all recapped. So there's a sense there's no drainage from anywhere. And there's even one of their, there's a hole, there's a floor, and then there's a hole and there's dirt. So.
That's probably from the French drain we put in.
Right.
Five, six years ago.
Right, so. It was great water.
I mean, the, the first mediation we did, we put the volcanic ash, they drilled it into the ground in the front of the building. And that was supposed to make the water do this. Then we put the French drain in on the inside of the building. Again, make the water like this. Problem is, you know, some of the water's doing this, but there's still some water that's coming up this way and coming up. And again, part of the problem with that is we have two layers of cement down there. The old cement that they never tore out, and then you have the leveling cement. You had that little bit of space in between and, you know, cement just naturally draws water, so it goes up in that air pocket and just does this, this, and this. It's gonna continue to do that until you only have one solid piece of cement down there throughout.
So, you know, on the agenda later on, we are gonna talk about the Capitol too. So, so we need to figure out what we have to do like now, what, you know, what the best plan is for a more permanent remediation and how to fund all of that.
'Cause no matter what we do with the building, whether we stay or go, it's still our building and it still has to be under code. The boiler has, you know, a pipe blown out of the side, which I do not know. Don't say it, the boiler.
Yes.
Has like the panel that's supposed to be there, if you go and look at it, there's a big hole out of the side of it. Our one boiler, we're supposed to have two, correct?
We can't redundant, we should have a redundant one.
So.
Oh, yes, that, that word should.
Should.
Yes.
Should could would, you know.
We got left with a lot of shoulds.
Uh, that's all for you folks, anything, anything for us?
Do we have, so we were away for the Fourth of July, yeah. Were there, I saw the email that went out about people letting them off that didn't have permits. Were there any issues?
Uh, we only had, I think, two complaints and it was all relatively.
So good. It has been rather quiet in the village. People were letting them off when we were two before or after.
Yeah, I think putting the notice on ahead of time saying, if you don't preempt it by now, you knock anyone and if you do shoot them off, we'll take them and try you, so I think that helps.
The only other thing is just a reminder about, mostly to the board, 'cause I, I know I spoke to you about it, but I don't know that the board is up to something, and that is the detailed work. We only budgeted $15,000. And, you know, it's good news that there's a lot more detailed work, but, but from an appropriated budget point of view, it has to be accounted for as spending, even though it's being covered over.
Right, right.
Yeah, so, I mean, as long as you can cover the overage within your own budget.
What are we accounting for? I'll let you exercise.
So I'm hoping to meet with Caroline, probably this week, 'cause I've got training tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday. Beginning, we, to get a final figure on what that account looks like at this point. Then I can look around. What was really gonna kill us is this pipe issue. And I was going to address it, maybe I can address it with you folks. Right now, with the, I think, about 163 hours in details for pipe on Bear Road. So if we build them at the $50-an-yard range, we're looking at about $700, $800 right now to build it.
And I think the budget for it was.
Just $70. And I know that they've asked to have an officer out there, we spoke about it tomorrow, but they canceled tomorrow, but they want an officer out there on Thursday, so I think by the time the bill, it's gonna be over $8,000 to submit the pipe. That $8,000 in details in there, I'm hoping that it will be charged to the account that you have set aside for Bear Road.
Yeah.
As opposed to my.
Exactly.
Detail account, because if that happens, I'm way over, way over.
No, it should.
Okay.
It should. So just, yeah, talk to Caroline, because it was part of the RFP.
And pipe eaves the open door, it's not us.
Well, we'll see.
How soon will they bill you?
Uh, don't know. They were pretty good last year, I mean, it wasn't much.
I just only built them after they billed you.
Is that the word? There's one folder that's all bills for Bear Road.
Oh, bills, there we go, thank you. I'm paying overs. Twenty-five, twenty-five thousand, so. It's not, um. It's not very much, so that's.
You're gonna throw a couple zeros?
Yeah. Well, it's too much to add a zero, but, uh. It's funny. Yeah, I don't know why they did a partial, but maybe it had to do with the month, I think it'd be at the end of the month. So they just billed us through, through the end of June.
But anyway, we should be getting something like $8,000 back.
Check with Caroline to build them. And then we'll see what happens.
Yeah, okay.
Is everybody having fun?
Everybody's having fun.
Oh, great. Want another chocolate?
I'm also, thank you.
All right.
I know you're trying to cut back. I'm gonna.
I think that's it for Department Head Business. Town administration, transfer station ordinance. Now, if I read the minutes correctly, you guys will pass it, right?
Yeah.
So, so my question is really a follow-up. Did we, are the public hearing minutes filed, Selwyn? Jody kept them. I don't know, could you, could you sort of follow up to make sure that they're?
I think part of the minutes.
They could be part.
They are part of it.
I thought so.
They're part of, they're part of regular minutes then, of the, of the twentieth.
Do you want?
Then that's, I don't know, I don't care, who cares? As long as they're there. I just wanna make sure that we.
Yeah.
That they were filed, that's one. The signed ordinance, where is, where is?
We have not received a copy. Secretary.
Okay, but could you, could I ask you to follow up on the signed ordinance, make sure the town clerk has a copy? That we scan the signed one and stick it in the ordinance folder online so that.
Oh, signed.
The signed one, yeah, the, the one that Jody and Mike signed.
Oh, no, we didn't have a.
Oh, you didn't have them to sign?
We didn't have one, no, we just adopted.
Oh, so you adopted the, all right, I'm sorry, you adopted the ordinance, but it's not signed.
Correct.
So it needs to be printed.
Needs to be signed.
I don't know, if Caroline was here.
Okay, so we can do that next week then.
So you're gonna write that down?
Yes, I am going to write that down. Excellent, thank you for that. So Patterson's, right? Yes, would you like to, did you come to talk to us?
Yes.
I think we can, we can, we have time right now.
All right, Alan Patterson lives right across the street. Uh, I would just like to know if the selectmen can write to the owners of that apartment building across the street to have that property weed whacked, sort of come down?
The one that's for sale?
Yeah.
Blue building, this blue one?
Yeah. They might need a baler.
We could, the best that we can do is ask, I don't know that we have an ordinance that,
Yeah.
you know, we can certainly ask.
Appreciate it.
Check it with the realtor.
And if, if possible, up on Church Street, if it could have the town, that stretch from the corner all the way down to, uh, or Pleasant Street, if he could weed whack that in front of the church.
So it's our right of way?
Yeah.
Okay. On the church side?
Yes. Well, it's not, talking to opposite side.
The sidewalk.
Yeah, sidewalk side.
Ask if they know the status of the house.
From Church Street to.
Yeah, the sidewalk is in.
To where the sidewalk ends.
Yeah.
Yeah, he checks it every day.
Uh, could you, would you know the status of that house or what, you know, what?
Yeah, we could tell you what we know, I mean, we don't know everything, but it, it, it's in some distress, the house itself. And so we posted that they can't, whoever buys, they can't just move somebody in, they're gonna have to do an occupancy permit. We did have the, the owner clear out the trash that was behind. So, you know, there've been some cash offers for it, but they haven't been accepted. So, so I don't think it's gonna move very quickly unless.
Yeah.
The bank or the owner or somebody, you know, starts to get desperate.
Yeah, okay, great.
But it does, it's an eyesore.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you can't help but notice it on the way in, and I was thinking, but, you know, we have no, we have no ordinance that says you have to keep your lawn mowed.
Yeah. That I have.
It's a health hazard.
Unfortunately, that's, that's the way it is. I'm sorry, what?
It seems to be a health hazard. I'm wondering how many critters are living there.
Well, we could, we could ask the health officer if it, if it is a health hazard. That's an interesting point.
Secure the building.
They've secured, they've gone through. Police, fire, and health went through.
Early on, right?
That's why we condemned.
Yeah.
But, but I think the point now is the tall grass itself a health hazard.
Oh, sure. Collects X and Y.
There you go. So if we can get it that way.
Anything would help.
Exactly, and we're always looking for tools, right? Because we need to have some hook so that we could say, look, would you please take care of this?
And even in Good Samaritan, can't hold somebody else's property.
No.
Not without their okay?
Right, that's right. So we'll check with the health officer.
Great. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you. Did you, have you heard the follow-up about Paul's integrity?
Yeah, it'd be the August 2nd meeting.
Yeah, July may be the carry.
All right. All right, good night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
Bye. Bye.
All right, so the next is also a transfer station issue, and that has to do with the request we had from Michael Shea in the Mill Building, I think he owns Fit Tree. And.
Oh, yes. To the transfer station. For his, for his disposal.
Did he have one previous?
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm gonna go look for it. I think it was a forward from Caroline. June 28th. Yes, if you have it.
Dear Rollins, Prince Selectmen, I am writing to request that my business be allowed a Rollins for transfer sticker, I am one of, I had one in the past five years, but recently informed I was no longer eligible for one since I am a tenant of Cutter Family Properties at Three Front Street Lower Mill. Without a transfer sticker, my only option is to throw all my plastic cans and paper in the general dumpster providing, provided for the building. As an environmental conscious person, business, this is a painful option. Thank you in advance for your consideration in this matter. Michael Shea, owner of Fit Tree Kitchen.
So he said he's had them for the past five years.
We went down one year. Three doors? Two, three.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm surprised that he was able to get one, but this, it's just gonna, I guess I'm just surprised it's coming up now and not last year.
Fourth year before, year before that. We had, we had one two years.
Yeah. So.
It's not as good a resume.
Maybe, uh, hard to say. So, you know, without looking at the ordinance, I don't remember exactly what it says about the mills. Or if it says anything at all or businesses. So I'm wondering if, if I ask one of the two of you to just take a look at the ordinance and.
I'll take a look at it, but as I recall, all commercial enterprise as opposed to having dumpsters or some sort of remediation of their garbage. So we made an exception for.
The vet.
The vet, because there's no place for it to actually put a dumpster. Because building is.
Is vet, yes.
It's all, there's no.
Proprietary law.
Yeah, property law. But. I'm inclined just to say no, but I'll take one of the ordinance.
Yeah, and I, I would encourage you to read the whole thing, 'cause there, sometimes it talks about a couple, yes, that's, that's a very good word for it.
It's to me. All they only did was repackage that.
Don't know, I don't think that. All right, so if you would take.
We'd buy some extra time.
Yes. So I can send him an email, just say we're looking at it, all right? Okay, and we'll take a look at that. All right. And just. Uh, yeah, but I, I did a, yeah, I did something wrong. Um. So we've already talked about Willy Street, is there anything else that, that you wanna say about Willy Street's business? All right, so I, I added by hand the CIP. So today I, I updated it for, I think it's ready for 2017, so Mike, I'm hoping that you're going to chair this effort again.
When?
And I'll have Caroline print it out on legal size. And I can either go over with you, or you don't mind if you have any questions before all the, the meeting. And I note, my note here, and my version of the, of the agenda, is just to remind you that the budget committee rep is Bill Irving again.
Oh, good.
Okay? And I don't know who else, is it you and Bill and department heads, or is there anybody?
The folks that had volunteered to be on it were Caroline, I saw Phil, Denise Knowles, and Kevin Hames from that.
Okay, so I, I said, did you?
Yeah. I have to speak to all of them.
Sure.
If there's someone to.
Okay.
The only two that were representing, it was Bill for obviously for budget, and Kevin for planning.
The rest were as community.
Denise was a resident and Caroline was a resident slash.
All right, and assistant.
Assistant.
Okay, so good. So I'll just make that note, have her print it out.
Perfect.
And you shared that already?
No, I haven't yet, but I, I will. I'll, when I print out one copies, I'll make one for you, because it's, it's, it's hard to. It's hard. And I would put it up on the webs on our folder, except, you know, changes so often, I mean, I'm happy to do it.
I would put it up on the website.
I mean, on our, our folder, so we can access it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So print it out.
Oh, even if it's rented by an internal union.
No, my different.
Absolutely. It's easier that way than the actual.
Oh, okay. I'll send you both back to my emails as well. Shady Lane. So we've got a request from Paul Connolly to review this next week. So they're going to come and they're going to, I have this going to be here as well, they're gonna talk to us about making a piece of that classified road. So that's just to let us know what's happening next week.
Yeah.
Uh, town hall repairs, I think we had, we had an update on the police. And Carol, the last I heard was just from the minutes, and that is with regard to the rest, is that Richard is still waiting.
Richard had a quote, had a conversation with another contractor, I was in writing him though, so it doesn't exist as far as I'm concerned, but it was, scope of work was less and cost was less.
Okay, so we're waiting then for an actual official.
Correct.
All right, very good. Uh, interdepartmental employee earnings, I kept that in there just, just to make sure that every group were all cleared, because the minutes.
As you mentioned.
Yes. So when Dave is working with Jeff, he's getting paid from road to labor. Okay, so we're all clear. Historic committee nomination, we've done that? No follow-up on Simon Paul's liability?
Well, there was while you were away.
Okay.
It's hard even wait, but now that it's July, but all of our, Caroline's been away, so.
Primex.
Primex, yeah. Primax didn't wanna enter a conversation with us until.
Correct.
We were.
Official.
So hopefully when she's back in the office, she'll go through a thousand of them, I'm sure she has.
I'm sure she does. I haven't finished going through mine, it's like, so.
We don't send them.
Okay. Policies and procedures, we've got a workshop, isn't this already, is that?
Yeah.
Oh, aren't we lucky?
The concert party actually should be.
Ah, what are you saying?
Well, no, the general step, getting company, it's called.
Where are they going?
That way. It's a healthy time.
Yeah.
It will be time.
It will be.
That's okay.
All right, uh, compliance issues. There were some updates.
Assessing issues?
Assessing issues, no, table, sorry.
Civil issues, I mean.
Compliance issues, there were, well, the minutes gave some updates, so I don't have anything other than what was updated from last week's minutes, so...
Maybe.
And I added to this agenda on One and One's Road, so, but it's not on this list, so...
Uh, okay, I don't know what agenda you're looking at. I think maybe with this...
The one that said to edit, to, the invitation to edit.
On an agenda?
Yes. So, um...
All right, so, so let's, let's just do it in, this is the, the only agenda that I'm aware of, so let's put it in. So Rollins Road?
Yeah.
Do you have a number?
Fifty-nine. Those ones with the caveman.
Oh, with the back, the backside?
Yeah, and I don't know if, um...
Have we sent a letter out?
But, but I thought Tom Buck would give it out, right?
Okay.
Did we?
Well, maybe it was the baton transfer that hasn't, like, we'd asked Caroline first, so maybe it never got to Tom.
Okay.
So let me make sure we know. And I had a question on Main Street. The, that sort of duplex that's between the Caris and Stockdale where they're digging up the farm.
It's my place.
Is that your place?
Stormpool, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, it's a subject, yeah, it's Leach Field.
We signed that the other day, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I came in going, I think we signed that.
So it was just a question, so all right.
We wouldn't have come knocking, no.
Bring your bathing suits.
Yeah, it's quite a hole.
It is, it is.
It's quite impressive.
How you got a chain into a pool?
Well, it's, it looks like one right now. If you like preservers.
Yeah.
Ew.
A diving board.
Ew.
Well, it's clean right now.
Yeah.
A lot more scum than a pool on a water.
Mm.
Well, good luck with that, Mike. All right, that was just a question. I didn't know whether we had...
Oh, we, we had that guy.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Um, I think that's it for town restoration items, other than the scanning items, activities, updates. What's going on this week with us, anything in particular?
I met with the Sea Rise.
Oh, yeah, last week.
Chief was here, Pat was, uh, Duju Young was here, Pat Macklin was here, I was here.
I think that was it. I think that was it, and the... SRPC, so Kyle, probably Kyle.
And it was about Sea Rise, twenty-five years' shore, fifty years' shore, one hundred years' shore. And it was the computer-generated version of what we've watched out, and the idea was, don't put your town, more for town properties. Don't put your town properties in these high-risk areas, which are all along Sam and Paul's. Which was the farm, um, the Putnams. And, um, the only structure that would be a problem would be Old Mill Bridge. So they recommended to raise it, even though we made it, it's still just a culvert. But the graphics show that...
It's a bridge, it's a bridge. I'm talking about the replacement bridge, right?
Right. But it's too low for a hundred years' shore.
Well, let's hope that the state is aware of this, because we used, I, I did a follow-up today with the state, not knowing this. It would have been interesting to, to have known that, but there was no way we could.
Right.
So, our last conversation with the state was requesting that it be put on the bridge replacement list.
Right.
And they, they're going to come to do a project cost assessment.
Right.
And, you know, budget season is approaching, and, um, you know, if mine's going to work on the CIP, it'd be good to know what we should plug in for...
Indeed.
And unfortunately, the red house is right. So...
Is it the red house, your red house?
Is it red house?
On Slido, is that the?
Yeah.
Yep.
But that's a hundred years' shore, if it's, you know.
Yeah.
Um, so they recommended not putting anything down on there, which we would. Um, and they showed the height, and, but they did not take into consideration on that map, which they have on other maps, um, if our culverts are strong enough to withstand most storms. And if our, uh, catch basins and things like that, that's another program that we'll be considering as well. But since...
As part of this, or, I mean, reasonably soon, or...
Yeah, they're meeting, they're having a meeting down, there's gonna be, there's usually three meetings, um, there's ten towns involved. But we're one of the luckiest ones as far as the sea rise.
Yeah.
Because we have the dams blocking it, and nothing behind that dam really involves us, so...
Yes, mostly the culverts, when it's just from abroad.
So Dover gets it hard, a warscan thing gets it harder.
From the secret, the seacoast.
But we, according to the maps and according to the computer-generated scenarios, we were in a pretty safe zone, so...
Okay, so, well, we can check with Erin too, to see, as we're working on culverts, what impact. But it's good to know about Old Mill, Old Milling.
Yeah, but they also have that information, and that they'll bring in at a subsequent meeting.
So, all right, thoughts, and when is your next, do they schedule another meeting?
Don't think they scheduled it yet. I would totally check.
Okay.
Um, and I forwarded you the email from the REC Commission. They feel no need to meet at this time. They have no agenda items.
Okay, all right. I, I, that's one of the ones I have, I saw it, but I haven't read it, so...
Yes, that's what I saw.
All right, thank you. Um, there's an SRPC meeting at the end of this week that I'll be attending. I'm gonna have a short meeting with Scott McGwin about the work that he's done. And he's going to be presenting it to the Stormwater Group, which is meeting for the first time on the twenty-first, so it's next week. And then, then we'll have a report to the board. Does that seem like a, a good plan?
Right.
All right, uh, we have a policy workshop on the sixteenth. Um, I think we can take our own minutes. Is that, are you planning on coming on Saturday?
Oh, no, I'm listening.
All right, we'll take our own minutes. Okay. Um... All right, I think that's it then for, um, stuff that we're doing, building permits.
Sure, first one is two thousand six, one oh six, two thousand sixteen, uh, one oh six, it's one eighty-eight... It doesn't have this new construction, it doesn't have a map actually. It's, uh, map one lot forty-three dash one. It's, uh, just the Gaggen property, we're, we're not finished yet. They're putting in, uh, gas. Could be a ninety-dollar fee.
Should we wait to make sure we have all of their driveway codes in place? Are we still waiting on the, you know? I think we can put a little post-it on that. And just have Caroline follow up with it and say, hmm, we've got a public permit on hold until we get this straightened out.
All right, yeah.
What are you figuring out? Um, well, we're not, so, we're, we asked them to submit to us a, a review by civil engineer to make sure that the road is as, uh, planned or presented to the planning board. I don't believe that's done yet. Maybe it has, I don't, just I'm not aware. And so, we really don't have any leverage, uh, and so this gives us a point of leverage to make sure that they follow through. Because we've missed, we, we signed some bill, we signed a grid permit that this is an addendum to. And so we, you know, we'd like to follow up to make sure that, you know, we're doing what we say we're doing.
Next is two thousand sixteen, one oh five, four ninety-one Silver Street. They're fixing their roof. It'll be a ninety-dollar fee also against that one. Right? Uh, permit number twenty sixteen, one oh four, twenty-eight Highland Avenue. Uh, changing their topics to laminated laminate flooring. Be a forty-five dollar fee. This one has no permit number. And also, we're gonna check out an incorrect note, because they're using an old permit that they've just photocopied from someone. So we're not really able to tell they fill out, well, they didn't fill out a little...
Anyways.
So they fill out the proper form and they...
Shall we put a post-it?
I don't know.
Oh, there you go, okay.
Is there any identifying number? If there's no building permit number, an address?
I give you an address, sure. Um, four seventeen Stockdale Road. Sure, I know why they're using a little form, it's, uh, it's construction. Easy to get under it. And fill up. So anyways.
Is it?
Yeah.
Correspondence with the...
I accepted the one.
Okay.
My new house on, um, Hunt.
Okay, and you've signed?
Not yet, but I wanted to let you know before, thank you. Um, map one lot three dash one.
Can I see that before we sign?
Sure.
Recently come into my attention this evening, while I was out in the hallway with the planning board chair, that there is a property on Clement Road that's going to go into the ZBA.
Is that the one?
It would be. May not have. And if not, there's a subdivision that was done, where there's a new little red house there. Um, and I think it's this house there.
Can I, can I, I'm confused. Previously on the Gaggen property on one oh six. That is map one, lot forty-three, one.
Yep, but this is...
So, but this is Clement Road. So this is not the civil engineers that are in the driveway that Suzanne's talking about.
No, but it's the same owners.
The same owners, but...
Um, it's at the same place.
No, but...
Okay.
They want another building permit, they need to finish the other project, I don't think.
I see. You're saying the map and lot are the same on the Gaggen project, but this project?
No.
Is that what you're saying?
On one oh six, and this is the same map and lot. So this, this is all talking about Clement Road.
Correct.
I see, so, so then we're using, so it's not related, so it's the same owner, but it's not, yeah, okay. So we're still gonna try to use leverage, yes, yes, exactly.
So...
But I did think it was the same.
Problem still is, and it has nothing to do with that. They want a subdivision, I don't want to be approving or accepting these plans rather, we're not approving or accepting. It was gonna go over the boundary line under their new subdivision, but it's complicated now.
So who can determine that for us?
That's what I, I'm, 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 I'm a lot, they're bonded, but...
It looks like, well, that's, this is a red?
Yeah, that's on the side, so they've got plenty, my problem is in the back, because of the side, they're fine.
So we don't have, we don't have a problem?
Depending on where they, where they subdivide. But it's something that we should make sure the ZBA's aware of.
So this one will be being subdivided at the moment?
They, they want to, again.
So, absent a, an approved subdivision, are they still, are they wanting to do this regardless? Is this something they need to do?
Yes, for that existing property.
All right, so then they have to do it for the existing property, whether or not it has an impact later on.
Separate, I just want to know if they're, they're subdividing a property, do they have enough space? If we're looking for, it's fine.
Okay, so we're okay.
I just wanted to see it, we're not stopping anything.
Yeah, okay, so we're all right with the sequence of events then, okay, very good. And if it is okay, I'm gonna review these bills tomorrow. Is there any objection to that?
No, I do have a comment, though.
All right.
When I was reviewing the bills while you were away.
Yes.
I did notice that we go to, um, Home Depot or whatever. We have the town, uh, we have highway going to, um, Home Depot, we have everybody else going to Home Depot for thirty-six rolls of toilet paper at a time, or... And I'd like to, um, get the password for our Home Depot account, so I can do a cost analysis to see if having that delivered from W B Mason or something like that would be cheaper. Because we're paying hourly, kind of to drive there, combat.
Right, yeah, good, super.
There's no reason for...
Yeah, no, and, and data, absolutely, data's good. So what is it that you need, Joe, in order to...
Um, just, I could just log on to our, you know, because it's always...
Do you want to see the statements?
Well, you can see the statements online, so, yeah.
Yeah, Caroline, yeah.
So I wanted to see like how much toilet paper didn't use this year, would it be cheaper to buy for the case? And then, just burst it from one general old shore. Because driving there every couple of weeks, by thirty-six rolls of toilet paper.
Check with Caroline, just to make sure she can get what you need.
Yes.
She has a file for that.
Yeah, well, we were talking about it when I was signing the bills, and she's like, well, no one's been able to have the time to do the cost analysis, so I figured I'd take that on and take that off her shoulders and at least find out, yes. We're, you, we're using man-hours for this, we are, so...
So you're okay with that?
Absolutely.
I'll have that.
All right.
Can I say one thing about American?
Yes.
The survey that we did today took a couple of jacks maps in here? Okay?
Just...
They want a subdivision.
Okay.
And they won't have that frontage, so...
Did you be able to do it?
Their next project. For the, for the ZBA's, we're gonna check.
Okay. All right, I did see an exchange being had.
Well, apparently they came in to ask for the application to go before the ZBA, and our town clerk for some reason sent it to the planning board chair instead of the chair of the ZBA.
Right, I saw that exchange.
There's, um, there's that house, there's the house next to it, um, that is a little sliver. That's big enough probably for a driveway, a shared driveway, where you could put five, so it's, I don't have five houses in the back. They're on a shared driveway, but we're, they wouldn't have the frontage, so when they go to the ZBA, they can get their frontage. But they don't, they have a hardship because they've created a hardship. So that should be abundantly aware of the ZBA.
Well, how do we, how do we, how do we make those things aware?
Well, the planning board chairman and I are willing to go to the ZBA when, when they come to the board.
Bless you.
They've created their own, or their own hardship.
Thank you. All right, um, correspondence. I had, I, I actually need some notes, because some things came to me directly home. Yeah, there are all these things, but... All right, so let me just make a couple of announcements based on correspondence that I received. So we did hear from, uh, PLT, Property Liability Trust, our prior property liability company. Uh, they are no longer allowed to write new policies, uh, but they're, so they're what they call complete runoff. So they're just running off claims that already exist, right? And they are having a meeting to change their bylaws, because what they would like to do, as far as my understanding from what I read, is that they want to have a, they want to hire a reinsurance company to manage the runoff. And I think we may have to change their bylaws in order to do it. So I'm just letting us know that there's a meeting in July twenty-first, nine thirty. Um, in order to do that. I also had, um, something from Department of State, uh, State Department of State, about training, state, what's your law training? Did you get that? Did you get?
Something to assess together on that.
All right, so... So, I have Caroline, I think I put a note on that.
Yeah, the, it's, it's one of the...
Yeah, so I... Yeah, so I, I've asked her to scan it and mail it to appropriate folks. But here, why don't you take a look at it?
One in Rochester maybe?
Yeah, Rochester's the closest. It's in the correspondence.
I think a two or three hour train.
Yeah.
We have our supervisor and checklist, ten four, one.
Exactly.
It's one of the board members.
Yeah, the board. So it's right here, so if you, closest, I think, uh, closest one is Rochester on Thursday, August fourth. So if you wanna.
If people do anything, I'm on there.
Most state businesses have those two, six, seven, eight, or three.
So here, I'll let you guide us through the correspondence, I think that's what this is, right?
Um, we do have some others from last week, we wanna discuss them quickly.
Sure.
We didn't act on, we don't want to discuss it, we just, we want to do it again, but this is, um, notifying the DRA as to whether or not we want to continue doing tactical property.
Okay, so.
I believe the last time we had an analysis was.
It was last year, yes, and so maybe we should do it every other year to, to do, do you want us to ask, um, um, ask Andrea?
Actually, it's July, it's August seventeenth, so. Everyone asks Andrea.
Do we wanna ask her to take a look at it again, so you could still work while doing? This is to, this is the inventory of Jackson property.
Well, it was, it was feasible last year.
It was.
Ten thousand dollar interest.
It was.
For six hundred dollars worth of workers.
Yes.
That was the cost analysis.
That was the cost analysis, so, so the question is, do we wanna do it every year, is it sufficient to do it every other year, what? And I think Mike is saying, well, why don't we have her do it?
Ask her if she thinks it's still going, she'll do it. If you put a post-it, like give me a post-it.
Alright, very good, thanks.
Mr. Castanelli came from Days Rouse, that was coming on the twenty-seventh of June. For his permit to operate motor vehicle junkyard. It was expired long ago, so it was nice he came in for it this year. To, we need to act on this request.
Now, in the past, I believe you kept going to take a look at the.
I went once, yes.
Would you like to go twice?
Well, I will.
Did you want to send Mr. Park?
Oh, you could send Mr. Park. That brought a smile to Michael's.
I think Mr. Park would do fine.
Alright, we'll go with that.
I'm there with that actually.
Alright.
I think we should make sure that Mr. Park passes the, um.
The conditions, yes.
Prior to your year's conditions. Uh, the operator needs to.
Okay, that's very good. Anything else from the past week? Mike, it was a whole.
Last week? Uh, there's, one other thing, I need to talk to Ed Jenson about something, about the, so, several years ago, several different people moved on the board actually. Previous select board entered into an agreement with the ATV club.
Oh, yeah, I've heard, I've heard a little bit about that. The one that, the one that's.
The other one, shady one.
Yeah.
Shady one. And here's the, that, this was in two thousand four maybe? Two thousand four. Was signed off, uh, two thousand four, who goes to the next, hey, let's see, it was fifty-five years. But never signed off by the town.
Well, here's that signature.
Well, that's for that year, it'll go for the next year, it's only for five years.
Oh, so this was their renewal?
Yeah, we've never signed with the town, so.
Oh, that's good.
Then one more renewal perhaps, it was never signed with the town despite the club. So I wanted to talk to him about that, it was with the back.
Okay, alright, so.
And in the hallway, I just did it.
Okay, perfect, there you go. Is that alright with you, Judy?
Yeah.
The deal, they need to have, we either need to renew the agreement or, or not, so.
Yeah, I still, I still, I, I still find it odd that at all the times that they were coming to us and talking about trails.
I mentioned that several times. I mentioned during the meeting. Which seemed odd, but.
But they, why would they just, oh, by the way, sorry, yeah, oh, by the way, the board, yeah.
Especially when we said, are there any other properties in town that was happened, oh, no, 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 doesn't matter, anyone else. Apparently it does. Are there any others? Granted, it's almost just very, it's like a two hundred foot, it's a very small, but four hundred foot, but it's not, still, it'd be nice if we knew.
Okay, okay, we hold this over for, to see if you and Judy will, we are appointing you to.
I know now, yeah, no, you're not. This is, this, so Judy and I are Stratford Regional Planning Commissioners, so we're on the big board. But this is their transportation advisory committee, and it requires, it doesn't require, but they're looking for actually different people.
Uh, solicitation for SMPO technical advisory committee. Pointing for two years, which goes seventeen to eighteen, meets on the first Friday of every month. To give and receive input on regional transportation issues and its critical component in the decision-making process. Please list your representative and your alternate, updating your mailing list fiscal year. On July first, please return via fax or email. If you keep the same appointments as the prior year.
But we don't have, no, I.
No, you are not.
None on this. That was my, that was my confusion. Were they talking about the thing, the group that I'm already part of, and I believe it or not, Judy is gonna fall off in that, but I feel quite sure that this is separate. And I, because it's roads, that would be great if you were interested. You know, alternatively, you could ask Patrick Carroll to see if he's any time. We could think about, is, is this suitable for Jeff? And I think we need a representative there, because if they're talking about shifting priorities, or, you know, doing something that has an impact on us. Or are trying to make sure that our projects are gonna get funded, we need to have somebody there, otherwise we just kinda fall by the wayside. No pun intended. Without guardrails.
I look at.
So, alright, so.
First Friday of February. So.
We're gonna have Mike, he's gonna look at it, I think.
Okay.
If, if I know ahead of time, I can always mention my Fridays from Mondays at work, I'll do that on Friday.
Alright, well, why don't you both think about it? And we'll see.
I didn't catch to see if it's an all-day meeting.
Probably not. No, the, the commission meetings last about two hours, so I'm guessing these probably last about, yeah. I mean, I'm not so sure. Yeah. But I would be surprised if they're longer than that. Alright, so he'll take a look at it, he'll think about it.
If, if it's not, it's separate from the last.
We'll just do it? Well, can we find one other person?
Sure. It probably shouldn't be two board members, is that? Board, or is that, are we supposed to open that? Is it certified mail?
Oh, it's us, we turn it back to us, right, yes.
I don't think it's supposed.
Caroline says she's not supposed to.
Alright.
Return to center, unclaimed, unable to forward.
It's evidence in case, what, I don't know if the issue was that individual.
One to all, oh, is this the, is the one with all the stuff?
Yes. He's already there from, he's refusing to answer the mails, or he opened it, it looks like he did.
Okay, so.
Alright.
Alright.
So we'll leave it open.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, well, can I have, uh, can I entertain a motion then to, to appoint Michael, and then we'll think about it number two? And I'll check to see if we can send two board members, if that's appropriate, like if you both. I'll do that.
Send over email to, uh, email.
No, scrap, scrap.
Who I'll, I'll see if anybody is interested.
Yeah, yeah, could do that.
Back to your proposal.
Let me make a note of it here. So, but, but Michael has said that he would be willing to serve, so can, can we have a motion to?
Motion to accept.
Appoint.
Motion to appoint Michael to the, um, to the, uh, technical.
SMPO Technical Advisory Committee.
SMPO Technical Advisory Committee.
Via Stratford Regional Planning, SRPC. SRPC. Here, could you, could you?
It's the first Friday, that was us?
I'll attack, I think, T A C. Super. Alright.
Well, municipal association sent us a, um, the floor policies, if you will, well, the policy conference is September.
The what policies?
Their floor policies are due.
Oh, if we wanna make any recommendations to change in bylaws? Is there anything we wanna ask them to do?
No, I'm doing my job.
There we go, Mike, you wanna see it?
Uh, spectrum energy. Interested in raising public service about underground facilities such as high-pressure natural gas lines. So that injuries and property damage should be avoided, losses, covering responsibility, and speed is such.
I think we have any underground.
Remind you.
Never you are.
I have a gas line.
Do you?
I have a gas line. I don't know how far it goes up.
Ground gas on Portland Avenue.
Speaking. Speaking. Well, should we pay attention to that? I, I think it's just an app, it's like.
It, it's just average.
So, speaking of utilities though.
They say it already goes out there.
If we roll along, it's gonna be in the minutes, what we agree to on the fuel oil, the, 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 the school bid.
Yeah.
The school is not bidding.
They're not bidding.
They're not bidding?
They wanted to discuss it with you actually.
Oh, oh.
That's in here too, we get to.
Oh, alright, thank you.
So that is. Do we get to that? Or was that, or?
It was something from Townsend here, but wasn't it?
It was in our proposal.
Okay, I don't think those votes. Did they send a proposal?
Did they send a letter?
This is, this payment. A, a proposal from.
So.
They haven't done it. We have that.
I think they did send one, which prompted.
To the school.
I thought, actually, they sent one to Caroline, and that's what prompted us to, they did send us a proposal.
That was a few weeks ago.
It was a few weeks ago, and that's what prompted us to say, let's check in with the school. So is the school just going to stay with Townsend, is that?
Apparently, um, they have decided, and I'm endorsing this, I'm just saying why they decided that, um, Townsend is always the lowest, or has been historically over several years. So they're not wasting their time putting up.
Okay.
I think that's the state, but, you know, publicity point. But, I'm also talking to the fact that our buying ability is.
Low.
Very low compared to what we would have if we were with this school system.
Oh, yeah.
Might have, might be in our best interest to follow the needs. I don't like it, they might be.
Yeah, and it's already broken up, cause we have some diesel, we have a little bit of propane, and then, you know, we don't have as much fuel oil as the school does.
Not at all.
So.
Nothing compared to anything else. It's not just our tiny school, it's, it's the S A U, right? Are we part of that bid? For, um, for, um, elementary schools and high school?
Yeah, I don't know exactly how they formulated, but.
No, they were, but.
No.
I mean, if it's just our school, we're, we're at an advantage.
Yeah, yes, absolutely, so. So, I mean, what is the board, what is the board's wish, just to, I mean, it is true, borderline slash Townsend has owned, has been the lowest over the last several years.
Does that mean?
And now, and now we don't have a school to give us any kind of buying advantage. So what is our?
They also handled all of the, um, the process.
They did, yes, they did get a lot of the process, exactly.
We did get, we did get something from them.
Yeah, I, I'd like, yeah, I saw.
It's a no, I bet it's up wrong.
Yes, alright, so let's table it. But, uh, that was my, it's not actually on the agenda, but I'll make a note to put it on with you next week. I had, I thought, I misread the minutes, I thought it did resolve whatever it was. Yep.
Complicated that, complicated that.
Okay. Alright, um, alright, so we're going through the communicate.
Okay, PLT is having a special meeting, there was going to be null and void soon.
Yeah, that's, I think that's what I announced earlier, so.
Right, they're, well, they're having a special meeting of the board of directors. To consider amendments to bylaws, changes to coverage and loss portfolio transfer being held on July twenty-first at nine thirty a.m. in Concord.
Yes, that was, that's the, that's the, they're going to, they wanna change the bylaws so that it can have a reinsurance company manage the runoff.
Right.
So, unless we think we have an interest in, but we don't have any current claims, so, just file.
DOT, July sixth, to you.
Oh, can I, can I, I, I have read this, so if you don't mind, I'll, I'll.
Go right ahead.
So Department of Transportation, apparently, I was the only one that got a copy of this, it's, it's, it's familiar to you, right, okay, so. They're planning on changing some of the guardrails on Rollins Road. There are places where they call them cable guardrails, and they're non-standard, so they're gonna replace them with those, they call them beam, um. W beam guardrails, with steel posts. So I don't know exactly where on Rollins Road, but I'm guessing wherever, wherever those cable ones are.
Where with the wooden posts.
Yeah, they're gonna replace, so, here's what they're asking us, though. All work is anticipated to remain within previously disturbed areas adjacent to the road work, all work shall be completed within the existing state right of way. So, Bureau of Environment is in the process of evaluating the potential environmental impacts associated with the project. To assist in this evaluation, I am asking that you notify me of any concerns relative to the project's potential impacts on environmental, social, economic, or cultural resources, such as wetlands, historic properties, and invasive plant species. Now, they're also sending this to the planning board, the historical society, conservation commission, and us, so.
Are we aware of anything? The ZB's people told us everything on Rollins Road is high ground.
Alright. Residents of Rollins Road, do you have anything to say?
No, I'm, I'm assuming that it's like near the Genado's property, there's.
Are there some there, so these, okay.
Over like Culver.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, so there's no concerns we would have about them changing the guardrails, would you think of?
Probably be safe.
Oh, uh, commercial impact will be Wentworth Greenhouse. It's right there. And that's where those.
Is somebody at water?
That's what I'm talking about, like Genado's, the water, yeah.
Didn't ask, didn't ask us for commercial, just, um.
Environmental.
It's, it's down the hall.
Yeah, the people park there on Saturday, so they're market.
Um, too bad.
Right.
Sorry.
And the summer market is not nearly as big as the winter market.
It's gonna happen.
I don't think it'll happen.
Economic.
Oh, okay.
Economic.
It's time by me, I mean, the historic.
Like it has to be done.
In planning.
And I'm sure they'll be done in a couple of days. I saw them working on it and working on it, it's been a few weeks, so.
Okay, so, so your, your, your question is, are they going to be doing this over such a stretch of time that it has an impact on everything else? Not the, not, it's just the transitional issue, it's not a, it's not, oh my god, this is gonna have an impact.
You're right.
Okay, alright.
And the DOT was pleasant enough to send us a little map with the dog. At Rollins Road.
And that's it.
So. And they're doing it in Manchester, Litchfield, Wyndham, Pelham, Concord, and there.
And the other thing is, is the tentative advertising date for this project is September sixth. So, alright, so we're good?
The only thing is, I'm just.
School buses.
School kids.
School buses will be moving in that day.
Yeah.
So it'll be good to notify the school district that, you know, they may need extra time, cause it, I'm assuming will be a one-lane road as they're fixing one side and the other. It's a good point.
That's a good point.
But I know I'll be getting down that way.
Did the states in town, they have any questions?
No, they didn't, doesn't matter, yeah. So I'll, I'll, oh, thank you, that's a good call.
Just happens to be the first week of school.
Yeah.
Everybody's shorty. Running tight anyway.
Well, I don't know, the tentative advertising date of this project is September 6th.
Oh, the advertising date.
Does that mean advertising for contractors, like an RP? I, I didn't quite know how to, how to translate that. What does that mean, under the advertising date? So, not sure. I've been wondering about that. Yeah, I, no clue, so I'll just let the school know, yeah.
Yeah, because you've got the buses that run.
Which we have is going to go.
I'll, you know what, I'll ask it, I'll, I will ask him when he thinks this is going to happen. That would be good to know. Yeah, what, what does that mean? Can I post it, please? Those? They're folded? Sometimes it looks like my father's, it's amazing, it's like.
Okay, I have one more, and it's an abatement issue.
An abatement issue? Do we have to approve it, or?
It's Chad's recommendation.
No, let's not say that. Well, we can do it at the end.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Is that it?
That was it?
Oh, okay, so, public, public comments?
I heard Jody make a motion to Mike to abort. I never heard a second or a vote.
An administrative slip-up?
From the best really, Charlie.
Okay, thank you so much, so, is there a statute of limitations on motions? So I guess your, your, your motion-
Make a mo, I will remake a motion to appoint Mike to the SMPO Technical Advisory Committee under the Stratford Regional Planning Commission.
I second that. Any discussion? Also, if you say aye.
Aye.
Aye, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He was really hoping.
You thought I was sleeping.
Yeah, apparently we were sleeping. I think we got off on the, all the S-M, SRPCs, SMOPs, whatever they are.
We were trying to get an alternate or second.
That's true. All right, anything else?
Uh, you also have on hold the Historical Committee Commission statement-
Thank you.
-for when Suzanne comes back.
Thank you. I've been, I've been reading that for the last half an hour and still missing it. For the Historical Committee, I didn't make it to last meeting, but being called back, um, brought to our attention that we never sent them the mission statement, but we hadn't found the last.
Oh, so we, there is a drought?
You made some edits to it.
Oh.
Until we're waiting for you, but I don't, I don't, I don't remember.
Oh, well, can I, can I take a week and just to see if I can find it?
I'm, I'm sure those are all, but, or at least a week, but there's also been discussion, um, it's a committee right now.
Yes.
There is the ability to become a commission under state statute, and then they can apply for grants and things like that.
Oh.
So, there has been some interest expressed by members of the, of the existing committee to perhaps, to ask the town meeting to make them a commission so they can apply for grants and things like that, so they can, like, there's a, what's it called, um, it's a pump house?
Oh, yeah, restoration of the pump house that is currently in somebody's backyard.
So you can apply for L chip money and stuff like that.
And you could have to, to move very important, um, pump relocation, probably will not give us issues, it's, it was for fire out, it was over there. That was an idea, but, but unless it, we become more formalized, or they, I don't know, I won't be a part forever, but, uh, they wouldn't be able to, the town would have to do it. I mean, there's some other thing, we, we're just a more digging, but I mean, the, the state statute is a high one, but if the town wants to do it, well.
There's no, is there a down, is there a downside?
I don't know, so.
On that same note, the meeting Mike missed, we talked about the parry yard school-
Yes.
-that was offered to the Historic Committee, and, um, I guess there's been research done before, that there is grant money to save historic school buildings. And this would allow us to get the money and keep it within the committee and don't let it be needed.
For one product like that, come on.
Yeah, no, it sounds like a good deal.
Yeah, I don't know if there is a benefit, we'd have to look at the statute.
Well, we'll need a, an appropriate warrant article when the time comes, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it should be pretty simple, I think.
Well, I, I don't, I would, I'd hate to say yes, I think you, you never know.
Yeah, true.
One would think, yes, it would.
My, my one concern would be, does it, it being a commission, limit membership in any form?
It might.
I don't know, it might.
It might.
Yeah, plant to open the statute.
Yeah, so that's, so we have to be a, a more, you know, more responsible about the membership, it's probably minimum size, it may be maximum size.
Yeah.
And, you know, it might say, you know, that, that the, you have to, you know, ensure that there's some kind of, you know, overlap with membership, so you-
Or, like, the terms?
Yeah, the terms.
Be staggered, sorry, number of years.
Staggered, yes, thank you. So, but, you know, if you, if you, if the committee has some time to take a look at the RSAs, uh, maybe talk to other historical commissions, then we can see whether that is appropriate. And even if, even if the commission has, they usually have minimum numbers more than anything else, I think, although there are maximums.
Uh, I think it, 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 there are indeed, it is, because, um, it's all, it's all ruled by statute.
Yeah.
And I haven't, I, we did a cursory plan to me several months ago, two months ago.
But you could always set up subcommittees, right, that would, can't you? Well, I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm going to stop, but.
You mean, uh, uh, under this current structure, to work on different projects?
Well, under, or commission structure.
I mean, perhaps, I don't know.
All right, so, but it's certainly worthy of research. I like the-
And, you know, I don't know if you have to run for it, or your, your appointments, I don't know, we have to, we have to look for that, I mean, do we want, we'll look, I don't want to believe it, it's something that I want, we want to run out, so.
Yeah, no, it's very good.
We're on our way out, so.
So I say, help somebody thinking about those kinds of questions. What do you want, no, what do you want?
Underneath the mission statement line, put, um, switching to commission versus community question mark, just so it doesn't fall off, but.
Yeah, good point, okay.
And I do believe it's on the agenda carried over from last one.
I don't have anything the other way, I don't know.
Okay, excellent. Anything else from the community, Nancy?
Um, along with the, if Jeff's going out and doing Church Street, um, the high, the old highway shed?
Yes, we talked a little today.
He, yeah, he said he was going to do it.
Okay.
That did come up.
We talked about it when, when we got it on public, and people hadn't walked back in yet, so.
Oh, oh.
We talked about doing that.
Yeah, he is, thank you, he's, we'll be doing it. He was waiting, it was a dust bowl, so this rain is going to get easier.
It's still going to be a dust bowl, but it's just going to be this tall of grass.
Perhaps, anyway, it's on the agenda. Anything else?
Good what they said about church, and church, and he wasn't here for that.
That's a good point. I've got it.
Okay.
I will let her know.
Because he left, and then they came in.
Yeah.
It just dawned on me that he wasn't here.
It's a good point, yeah, it is, I'll take care of it.
And I'll put this dead tree list into the other dead tree list, and put that, it's from the, our birds.
Yep. All right, I'm just going to make that note, and then we'll go into non-public for purposes of reviewing the base request. All right, so, Mike?
Yes. How's someone more?
Okay, Mike is moving, second, and roll call Mike.
Yes.
Yes, okay, so we're, we're now, we're about to go into non-public, thank you so much, is that off?
No, Sally will turn it off.
See you tomorrow, Mike.
All right, it'll be in the morning. We're going to get there a little before nine, I think.
Well, we'll be there before that.
Where are you going?
Like I said, like I said, we're, we're not going to get special seats with you.
You have my number.
I hope you've gone to, I don't know why they didn't, they called, I didn't.
Well, I was on 30.
Yeah.
And normally, I also give emails that I head to RST. Cause that's getting me going. You know, it's, sure, you don't have phone availability.